I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, July 28th, 2025. Christina, would you please call the roll?
Chair Mitchell.
Here.
Vice Chair Najak. Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner Guinea.
Here.
Commissioner Sly.
Here.
Commissioner Tuing. And Commissioner Bruce.
Here.
Thank you. Item number three on tonight's agenda is the City Council update. Christina, do we have a City Council liaison here to provide an update?
Not today.
Thank you. We're going to throw a curveball and add an item here. We'll call it 3.5 for the agenda. We just wanted to welcome a new Commissioner, Mr. Brian Guinea. Welcome to Planning Commission and thanks so much for, you know, spending your time with us and helping us out here. We look forward to working with you. Item number four on the agenda is the approval of minutes, and we have two sets of minutes to approve. So we'll go with the first set, or the minutes from our meeting from June 9th, 2025. Ask the Commissioners, does anyone have any revisions or comments to the minutes as proposed? Okay, none? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Sorry. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the meetings from June 29th as written.
Okay, and do we have a second, Deanna?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes as written from June 9th, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose or abstain? No, thank you. That'll bring us to the next round of minutes. It is from our meeting from June 23rd, 2025. Commissioners, does anyone have any comments, proposed revisions to the minutes as drafted? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the meetings from June 23rd, 2025 as written.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstain? Great, thank you. Okay, that takes us on to item number five from tonight's agenda, public comment. Christina, do we have anyone here or on Zoom that wants us to provide public comment or raise an issue regarding items that are not on tonight's agenda?
None tonight.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Item number six, the general updates from the Commission for Citizen Involvement. I have a few postcards here and I will just, I will read them out. The first thing is National Night Out from the Palisades Neighborhood Association. The date is Tuesday, August 5th. It is a after-July 31 check online for a party in your neighborhood. Get to know your neighbors, celebrate with a potluck, barbecue, music, or games. Enjoy your neighbors in the evening together. Again, that's National Night Out, Tuesday, August 5th, so a check online. And there's a website here to see for a party in your neighborhood. I have a specific, same update, but this is from the Old Town Neighborhood Party, National Night Out. Again, same date, Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. This one is from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at the George Rogers Park Picnic, the shelter on Furnace Street, if you are familiar with George Rogers. Join all your Old Town neighbors for an evening of food, fun, and community connection. Lake Oswego firefighters and their fire truck, police officers, and city leaders will be stopping pie. Pie. I said pie, it's probably a Freudian slip there on a potluck. This is a potluck, so bring a salad or dessert to share and bring cash to donate towards pizza. Again, this is the Old Town Neighborhood Association, and it's the National Night Out. Okay, last update is from the North Shore Country Club District Neighborhood Association. It is a welcome to new board members. It is again coinciding with the National Neighbors' Night Out, Tuesday, August 5th, 2025, and get to know your neighbors better by hosting a get-together. This one doesn't have a location, but if you are in the North Shore Country Club District and would like to get to know your neighbors and the new board members of the Neighborhood Association, you can, I'm sure, contact, there is a contact, Barbara McIntosh at Barbara, B-A-R-B-A-R-A dot McIntosh, M-A-C-I-N-T-O-S-H at live.com. And that will end item number six in the general updates, which will bring us to item number seven on the agenda, our work session. We have two items for tonight. We'll get to the first one, 7.1. This is work session number three on the Fair Housing Policy and Education, LU 25 dash 0001. Staff Coordinator is Eric Olson, Long Range Planning Manager, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair Mitchell, and good evening, Commissioners. I'm here, I don't have a PowerPoint tonight. I want to keep it relatively simple because we've already talked about this a little bit at the Planning Commission, so I'm just going to give you a verbal presentation this evening. As you know, and you know, we talked about this earlier this year, as part of our housing production strategy, which was adopted last year and approved this year, the city has committed to what's called the Fair Housing Policy and Education Strategy. That kind of, it's a strategy that involves two pieces. Really, the first piece is what we're here to talk about tonight, so comprehensive plan amendments to really codify and make explicit the city's commitment to fair housing, as well as a longer-term strategy to sort of spread information and raise awareness and provide sort of an educational campaign related to fair housing out in the community. So that's something that we have begun to some degree, we're still working on, but is a longer-term strategy. So really, you know, we're here to talk about proposed comprehensive plan amendment tonight. That's, of course, we can, I'll always talk about the other piece as well. I'm happy to take, you know, input there. But really, you know, we wanted to do this as one of the first strategies for the housing production strategy, just to really formalize the city's commitment to fair housing goals. We're not necessarily talking about introducing anything new in terms of what the city would be doing. We're already required to comply with these laws from the federal level and the state level. In particular, on the state level, the city, you know, when it comes to affirmatively furthering fair housing, a lot of what we've been doing with respect to the housing production strategy and our housing needs analysis directly gets at ways that the city required to, but is already actively working to affirmatively further fair housing and think about the city's housing needs moving forward. So that's sort of embedded within the state system of how cities must comply with, you know, regulations that are consistent with affirmatively furthering fair housing, of course. But, you know, when it comes to what we're proposing tonight, it's really just some language to add to the comprehensive plan that sort of makes that clear. Again, sort of, the strategy has other components as well. Ultimately, we are hoping to facilitate a better understanding of fair housing issues in the community and to educate city staff, housing stakeholders, and the community at large about, you know, fair housing laws and the rights that residents have, particularly those in protected classes. So as you, as folks that have been on the Commission for, at least since the beginning of the year, are aware, we did hold a work session on this earlier this year where we received a overview of affirmatively furthering fair housing and sort of a description of just general fair housing policy, just an overview of what fair housing is really from, a representative from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. So Samuel Goldberg was kind enough to come in and give us a presentation back in January, on January 27th of this year. And then we also talked briefly about this when we discussed our general strategies to implement the housing production strategy. Lots of using the word strategy there. But yeah, so we've talked about this twice, actually, at the Commission, so this will be the third time. That's why we're kind of having a little bit more narrow of a focus. More recently, the City Council held a study session on this topic a couple of weeks back, a week and a half or so ago, on July 15th. They received a similar overview that the Planning Commission received. Sam Goldberg is now actually working for the state, so we actually received it from a different staff member, Shail Ruder, who did a wonderful job, tried to sort of crunch down that presentation into a more digestible amount of time for City Council digestion and consumption there. So it was, I think, she did a wonderful job, and we really got some great discussion going at, you know, the City Council study session that was held. So at that study session, we did receive direction from City Council to essentially move forward with comprehensive plan amendments, roughly, you know, taking the approach that we recommended in the staff memo, that sort of more surgical approach as opposed to a more detailed, sort of thorough revisiting and, you know, almost like a redo entirely of the Complete Neighborhoods and Housing chapter of the comprehensive plan. So I'll talk a little bit more about specifically what we're proposing, but just to kind of really close the loop on the City Council study session, you know, there was a lot of discussion from City Council about how, you know, the city should be taking a little bit more credit for what we're already doing. So this is one really small step that the city can take to say, hey, we're already out there, you know, complying with fair housing policy, doing various things in the community to promote fair housing and affirmatively further fair housing. Certain counselors really want to make sure that, you know, we were sort of being a little bit more, I guess, that we're advertising our strengths and talking about the good things the city is doing a little bit more than we have recently. So to that end, we are also working on, and this is kind of consistent with that sort of educational piece, we're working on some updates to our housing page on our city website to provide a nice sort of easily accessible set of housing links and resources for folks in the community. So that's something we've begun to sort of get started since we received that direction from City Council and sort of, again, helps us kind of make that story and tell that story to the public more broadly. And of course, you know, when it comes to the comprehensive plan amendments, there are different strategies that we could take. So, you know, as I mentioned, or I touched on a second ago, we could be taking a lot more thorough of a look at the Complete Neighborhoods and Housing chapter, and I do recommend doing that at some point in the near future. However, you know, we came up with a general work plan for the housing production strategy and wanted to take on some sort of more near-term or smaller projects in the early stages of our work. So this is the first year that we've begun sort of implementing the housing production strategy. And so as such, we're proposing to take the more sort of limited or surgical approach for now and then come back once, particularly once the state has finalized its rulemaking for the statewide housing needs analysis, the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis, which will really change the way that we do our housing needs analysis work and to, you know, just kind of read the sort of wins a little bit and look at our tea leaves and think about changes that are happening at the state already that could change what we've already done really with respect to the housing needs analysis. So we do recommend waiting until all that work has been completed, or, you know, the rulemaking at least at the state has been completed, so we can not have to go through and just, to be frank, update our comprehensive plan every single time something changes at the state. We want to be a little bit more strategic about that. So as you can see, you know, what we've recommended here is just to add a single policy to the Complete Neighborhoods and Housing chapter. Again, that's the chapter we should be looking at more broadly in the future, but specifically within the Housing Choice and Affordability Policies, we have proposed to add some language. And Christina, if you don't mind showing that on the screen really quickly, this is just an excerpt of what was proposed in the staff report in terms of the language to add to the comprehensive plan. Really, the idea here is again, taking a more limited surgical approach for the near term that would allow the city to really demonstrate its commitment to fair housing, again, in the near term, knowing that we're going to have to come back and do more work on this chapter. And still, you know, I think, you know, we are proposing some language here, but we really want to hear from the Planning Commission in terms of the language itself. If you have any recommendations or, you know, suggestions on what we're proposing here, staff is looking for some direction. Generally speaking, again, we did receive that direction from Council to take this more limited approach. So I would sort of reiterate that, but when it comes to the policy that we are proposing here, you know, we just want to make sure that folks are comfortable with this being sent out for a public hearing. So if you all are comfortable and sort of, you know, following this meeting, if we are in agreement, you know, we would be then noticing this language for a public hearing on September 8th. So that would be sort of the next step here would be to notice this comprehensive plan amendment next Monday. So fairly quick here, so, you know, that is what we're looking for though from you is just some guidance on what you'd be comfortable bringing to that hearing. So really, that's about it. Open to questions.
Yeah, thank you, Eric, for the detailed presentation. Yep, thank you, sorry. Regarding the, sort of the second part of the new language, overcoming disparities in access to community amenities, I didn't see that language in the other, the samples provided from the other cities, and I was wondering if it's specific to why that language was included here?
Well, there actually are similar, there is similar language in some of the other.
Some of the ones that were simpler were just like, adopt a fair housing strategy, like, period. And ours includes that specific language about access to community amenities. And I was wondering if that's in relation to anything specific or why that was included here?
Yeah, you know, I think it's ultimately just explaining what affirmatively furthering fair housing means, particularly within the context of Lake Oswego. When it comes to how this is applied, you know, when we consider amendments to the Community Development Code or any sort of legislative amendments more generally, we identify the comprehensive plan policies that apply to those amendments. And the more specific language that we can have in our actual comprehensive plan policies, the easier it is for staff to respond and show how we are, or, you know, this would be not ideal, but if, or if we are not furthering that policy, which again, we would strive to always do that for what we're bringing to the Planning Commission, but, so that, you know, when folks, including the Planning Commission or members of the public, are reading that sort of, our sort of compliance, about our compliance with comprehensive plan policies, that we know what we're talking about when we talk about fair housing. So overcoming disparities in access to community amenities is one sort of component of fair housing that could be addressed in those findings for, you know, particularly amendments in the future. So we just want to be a little bit more explicit, or this is what I in particular was hoping to do here, was to, you know, keep it to a fairly limited approach, but to at least include more than the city wants to affirmatively further fair housing and talk a little bit about what that means in practice.
Are there specific community amenities that you had in mind, or is it just all community amenities? Is it really regarding specific community amenities? There's been a particular discussion about one amenity that people are very interested in, so I'm curious if you're talking about access to the lake or not?
I mean, an amenity is an amenity, but this is not specifically talking about access to the lake. I think what we're talking about is just access to schools, access to parks, access to, you know, services, transit, you know, LOPD, fire department, things of that nature. So really, the idea, you know, really broadly, when you're thinking about fair housing and equity, is just to provide more opportunities and, or more housing units and access to opportunity, I guess, in opportunity areas, if you will, that have a lot of amenities, a lot of services that folks can benefit from.
And the City of Gresham also included it.
Yeah, City of Gresham had a very detailed sort of update to their policy that really seemed to be more specific and said, we will do this in every instance. You know, so they took, you know, we're saying we want to take a more surgical approach here, which I think makes sense given the context of things coming down the pike still from state of Oregon. I just was curious if that was talking about expanding access, community access to the lake, or if it was just broadly in general, because I think people are still focused on that issue, and it just, that came up in my mind, whether that was specific to that or not.
No, it's absolutely not specific to the lake, and I think, yeah, it's, this is our housing policy, so really, you know, we're going to be talking about any city-provided, city sort of accessible amenity generally. So, you know, we're not necessarily limiting it just to city amenities, I suppose, when we talk about things like the school district, that's not technically, you know, within the city. So we leave these relatively broad because the way that we respond to them, you know, staff is responding to these and basically saying, this, you know, Planning Commission slash City Council slash DLCD, LCDC, this is what, this is our argument for how we are making this policy actionable through whatever the proposal is at that time, you know, Community Development Code amendments or what have you. So we're probably not going to touch on every single amenity possible within those answers and probably focus a little bit more broadly on, on how we're, affirmatively furthering fair housing through this policy.
Thank you.
Eric, I got a question on the use of the term protected classes at the end of the proposed language, which I assume that's, you know, federally and state-protected classes. But when you're, you know, looking at the other examples, many of them do specifically reference state and federally protected classes, but then they list other categories or have another catch-all term. By the way, some of those categories probably are federally or state-protected classes themselves, but I was just wondering, you know, are we too narrow by just saying protected classes, and should we sort of say, earlier in the memo, we say priority populations. There's a few terms thrown around. I just want to make sure we're getting it right with that language.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion. You know, I would be open, I don't think it's needed there. I think fair housing law, generally speaking, kind of is, directly speaks about protected classes, of course. You know, we're talking about affirmatively furthering fair housing, which is a little bit more open-ended, so maybe it's not appropriate just to speak about protected classes, maybe a more inclusive approach is warranted here.
Yeah, I think that's, that would be my, my only suggestion, but otherwise, yeah. At the beginning of the memo on this, in the background section, for the HPS, the Fair Housing Education Strategy, Strategy 13, is intended to benefit priority population, including low-income households, people of color, people with disabilities, seniors, and other state or federal protected classes. So...
Yeah, that was from the Housing Production Strategy. You know, we're supposed to kind of identify specifically who is supposed to be targeted through a particular strategy. So that's like where that priority population, sort of terminology came from. It's not from the state law necessarily, so apologies for any confusion there. But, you know, I'd be happy to, you know, again, I'm not sure that that for people in protected classes language is absolutely necessary in this case, so I'd be happy to eliminate that if the Commission was in agreement.
Oh, you just mean employee strategies to affirmatively further fair housing by fostering inclusive communities, overcoming disparities, and access to community amenities, and enhancing, enhancing housing choice, period?
Period. You know, again, I think that protected classes component is captured in just the terminology of fair housing.
Yeah.
But again, it's, it doesn't necessarily hurt to have that language for when we're responding to it, but it would be nice to talk about how it's not just impacting people in protected classes, but we don't want to ignore people in protected classes either, I guess.
Yeah, sure. I don't know if I left it open, because now we don't know whether to strike that out or not, or if we want to take a vote, or what do we want to do?
You don't have to vote, I guess, you know, this is more, again, this is about what we're bringing to the hearing, so, you know, it can always be modified at the hearing itself. Yeah, I don't know if you could add the language at the hearing itself. I think it would be sort of covered, so really, you know, you don't have to make a decision on it now, but is this language enough for you to go from, to take, you know, to take this to a hearing and, you know, make some modifications that you might see fit, or do you want to change it even before the hearing?
A suggestion would be maybe taking the protected classes bit and having that be a separate sentence, so it ends with enhancing housing choice, period, and then having it be sort of a separate thing to acknowledge the protected classes in fair housing, so that it's clear that enhancing housing choice is open-ended and can include other communities that aren't under that protected classes, but still acknowledges that as part of upholding state and federal housing laws.
So sort of a explanation of what protected classes are covered within the sort of fair housing laws as they exist? Is that, is that kind of what you're getting at, or is it more specifically, you know, I just want to craft this sentence right for you?
Yeah, yeah. So ending it with saying enhancing housing choice, period, and then saying something like, or you could do enhancing housing choice, comma, and upholding protected class status with state and federal law.
Okay.
Break it into two ideas.
So it doesn't all apply to protected classes, but then that's an additional, okay?
Yeah, I was thinking along the same lines, like, comma, including for people of protected classes?
Including, okay.
What do you mean by now limited to?
Getting the both and.
Okay. I will review the record and try to take everything that you're saying and come up with a sentence that we're all happy with. And again, you can make more changes at the hearing, but I think I have enough to go from, at least if folks are comfortable with these changes. I mean, at least those specific changes, unless, and if there are more, we can talk about those too.
Any other Commissioners have comments or thoughts or proposed changes? No? Okay. Otherwise, I think we're good with the, making, just bringing this recommendation to a hearing with the revisions?
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, that will take us on to item 7.2 on tonight's agenda, and this is our first work session on the tree regulation amendments. This is PP 24 dash 0006. We're going to receive a present, presentation on a project to update city tree regulations to ensure alignment with urban forestry best management practices, long-term urban forest sustainability, and compliance with state laws. Staff Coordinator Jessica Numanalu, Community Development Director, will lead us through it.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, Commissioners. This is, as the Chair said, the first study session we're having on the tree code amendments. And what I am hoping to cover today is just to provide you some background and a general overview of what the project is. We're going to talk about the scope and schedule, and then we'll have opportunities for questions and discussion at the end. I will say that this type of amendment typically doesn't come before the Commission. You guys typically don't see a tree code amendments because it's not part of our development code. And the Planning Commission is a body who makes recommendations to the City Council, obviously, on land use regulations. But because our tree regulations, as I'll discuss later, involve both our tree code, which is in Chapter 55 of the City Code, as well as the Community Development Code, which is Chapter 50, the Commission would need to make a recommendation to the Council on those amendments. And in our tree code amendments, one of the reasons why we have to amend it is because we have to assure that we have clear and objective standards for housing. House Bill 2138 was just passed by the state legislature and signed into law by the governor about a week and a half ago. And what it specifically stipulates is that all city tree codes have to have clear and objective standards for housing. So that is something that we do need to tackle. That is sort of in your purview, so it makes sense for this Commission to make some recommendations on the tree code amendments as well. So I just want to start off by just discussing the project team. I am the project, the main project coordinator for this project. I have, I'm very well-versed in the tree code. When I first started working here, many, a few decades ago, I actually started out by administering the tree code, so I am very well-versed and steeped in these standards. Also joining me is Daki Sissel. She is our current planner who administers our tree code, so she basically does all of our tree permitting. Morgan Holan is our technical consultant or contracting arborist. She's been at the city for a very long time for us, extremely knowledgeable and knows all of our processes, all of our codes, and we're really happy to have her on the team. Our consultant team is Cascadia Partners. They're an urban planning and environmental sustainability and public engagement consulting firm, and they're based in Portland. They have done similar projects for tree code updates for other cities, and they also worked on our State of the Urban Forest Report, which is an update that kind of provides baseline, baseline analysis and data on the status of our, of our tree and tree canopy in, cover in the city back in 2022. So they're, they're, they're familiar with the city, and like I said, they've, they've worked on, excuse me, other similar projects in other cities. They are not joining us tonight, and the reason for that is that we're trying to be mindful of the budget, and because this is a real introductory, just an introduction to the Commission and an overview of the tree code and regulations, it just made a lot more sense for staff to handle that and us to preserve our budget. But they will be here at future work sessions, and you will be meeting them actually the next time we come before you. So let's start off by talking about our city tree regulations. So first of all, we, obviously, we have our tree code. That's Chapter 55, as I mentioned before. And the purpose of the tree code is to protect and preserve trees citywide, and it specifically has provisions for tree cutting, tree removal, tree protection plan requirements during development, mitigation or replanting standards that are required for tree removal, and then it also covers our heritage tree program. I'll talk about... our heritage tree program. I'll talk about the Tree Code here a little bit more in a minute. The, the other place in our code where you will find tree regulations is in Chapter 50. And it's kind of scattered throughout the code, but essentially, you're going to find them generally in design and overlay districts. So these include, like, our downtown redevelopment design district has standards for, for trees and tree preservation, West Lake Grove, or Lake Grove Village Center overlay. Even Old Town requires that you plant two street trees for every new house that, that is built there. Also, First Edition requires that, too. But it's kind of a little bit here and there, and it's not sort of consistent citywide in how, how we regulate those standards in Chapter 50. And then the other main area you're going to find it is our sensitive lands overlay district. And our sensitive lands consists of mapped sensitive lands that are either wetlands, stream corridors, or tree groves. And there's real specific regulations that you have to comply with in those sensitive lands areas. So beginning with our Tree Code, I am not going to go into depth. I mean, I could literally talk for an hour about the Tree Code, and I'm not going to do that to you. So I'm going to keep it very simple. But the overall purpose of the Tree Code is to preserve the wooded character of the city and protect trees as natural resources by regulating the removal of trees and protection, and protecting trees during construction. And we require a permit to remove any tree that's six inches in diameter or greater in the city. So it's pretty, pretty low threshold. And up on the slide there, you can see we have many different permit types that, that cover a wide variety of reasons for tree removal. I have highlighted specifically Type 2 and verification because those are the two permits that are associated specifically with development. And those types of tree removal have to have clear and objective standards for housing. The rest of them are already pretty clear and objective. I think it's pretty well-covered in, in the rest of the permit types. The Tree Code also requires replanting as mitigation, typically at a one-to-one ratio, but it depends. In certain circumstances, we could require two-to-one. It also requires that native species be planted if native trees are removed. And I would say that one of the issues that we're going to have to address as part of the updates is looking at those standards and whether requiring native trees every time a native tree is removed is the right, is the right regulation, given climate change and making sure that we have a resilient urban forest. Because native trees are not going to thrive as well in a future climate as they are right now. In fact, we're already seeing some species like Western red cedar who are, that are being negatively impacted by like the, the heat domes that we've been having and other things. So we really need to look at expanding our list to include climate adaptive species, things that are more drought tolerant and that can grow in hotter conditions. So keeping our native species, but also trying to expand that to make sure that over the long run that we have climate-adapted trees and landscaping. For the Community Development Code, again, you're going to find our, our tree regulations in the design overlays districts. And what they typically look like are things like minimum tree planting density. So we, we may have an overlay district that requires three trees for every 500 square feet of, of area, as, just as an example. Some of them have an emphasis on preserving existing larger native trees. That specifically in Lake Grove has that. There's also standards that require planting of large stature trees, also in Lake Grove, where feasible. Again, we're going to have to work on the clear and objective part of that, which we're, we'll be here talking to you all about. But those are just some of the examples of the kind of tree regulations you're going to find in Chapter 50. On the sensitive land sides of things, the, the tree regulations, they limit the type of tree removal that's allowed in sensitive lands, which makes a lot of sense. I mean, we're not going to allow wide-scale development in sensitive lands. So there's certain types of tree removal that you can't do in sensitive lands. It also prescribes minimum planting densities. And again, just as a highlight, we're not going to get into the details here. But one of the problems we have with our sensitive lands code right now is that we require some pretty dense plantings, and we've encountered some problems in the field in that it doesn't account for the fact that there's existing vegetation there. And we certainly don't want them out, going out there removing native vegetation that's already there. Sometimes the planting densities are just too dense, and they're, then they don't survive, and it's just adding extra cost for the applicant for no good reason. So there's lots of things that need to be worked on as, in terms of the sensitive lands regulations. And then, again, like the Tree Code, there is a requirement that native species have to be planted in sensitive lands, but we do need to revisit that to make sure that we, again, kind of think long-term for climate resiliency. So these are all regulatory tools. And regulatory tools are incredibly important. And the reason they're important is because, in terms of managing our urban forest, is because only 20% of our urban tree canopy is on city-owned properties. So that includes the public right-of-way, includes parks, includes city-owned properties. The remaining 80% is all on private property. So that, the Tree Code is really a primary tool that we have to manage our trees, our urban forest on private property. I will say that the regulations have played a significant role in what we have today, which is a beautiful city aesthetically because of the trees. And, you know, trees bring a lot of amenities, and we have over 53% tree canopy cover, which is the largest of any city regionally of comparable size. It is, it is, there's a lot of cities that would love to have even, even 40% tree canopy cover. And so we're well over what, I guess, most cities would expect to have. And our, our, our goal is not to continually try to, you know, we don't want like 100% tree canopy cover at some point. Obviously, that doesn't make any sense. But how do we make sure that we can maintain what we have and that we're taking care of it? Some interesting facts are that when we look at our tree removal permits in the last five years, 32% of all tree removal is for dead or hazard trees. Compared that to tree removal for development purposes, that's the verification in Type 2, it's 16%. So when we were doing our State of the Urban Forest Report, we were asking people what is the greatest threat to trees, and almost everyone said development. And yes, there is a threat by development, but by and large, taking care of the trees we have, you know, we have a lot of trees dying and become hazardous. That is going to be critically important to saving our existing mature trees. But the regulatory tools are important, too. So Lake Oswego has an extensive set of guiding policies that support the stewardship, maintenance, and development of our urban forest. And in fact, in 2024, the city completed an update to our urban community forestry plan, which is up in the center there. And that plan is a deep, it provided a, or excuse me, it included a detailed review of all relevant city codes, plans, policies, and reports, et cetera, that affect urban forest management, and many of which are shown on the slide, but that is not an exhaustive list. And what the plan does is it brings together those codes, policies, and plans to create a comprehensive framework for managing and sustaining the city's urban forest. So our urban and community forestry plan has four main components. The first, it covers urban forest sustainability indicators. And essentially, what, what it does is it describes a recommended inventory approach. So one of the, one of the main recommendations of the urban community forestry plan is for the city to do a full inventory of trees on city-owned property, not private property, we can't gain, gain access to do that, but on city-owned property. And then, and then it has some sustainability indicators that we need to look out for. And this will help us sort of evaluate the health, the age class, and the just sort of current condition of our urban forest. And that will help us make better management decisions here in the city. Another recommendation of the urban community forestry plan was to hire an urban forester, which the City Council approved the budget to include an urban forester in this fiscal budget, biennial budget. And we are currently in the process of recruiting for, for that. So once we have that urban forester, they're going to be integral in implementing much of the action items in the urban and community forestry plan, including the recommended inventory. The second section is urban forest management. And basically, this section reviewed our current urban forest management practices, and they measured them against industry best management practices, and then made some recommended improvements in the plan. And then the third, which I've got bolded here, which we want to pay attention to, is they did a comprehensive review of existing codes, plans, and policies related to trees. And both the Community Development Code and Tree Code are actually included as appendices to the urban and community forestry plan, and it's been annotated with highlighting issues and recommended amendments as, and that is where a lot of the Tree Code and Tree Regulation Amendment regulations are coming from, is these recommendations from our urban and community forestry plan. And I will point out, I think some of you might have been involved when this update was done last year, but there was an extensive public outreach that was part of this plan in terms of getting feedback for the recommendations and including the amendments that are included in the urban and community forestry plan. And then finally, there's a strategic plan and implementation plan. And these are all recommended actions that are based on findings and recommendations from all of these components of the plan. And it's, and it includes, like I mentioned before, the recommended updates to the Tree Code and Community Development Code. So before I get into the regulatory recommendations from the urban and community forestry plan, I need to point out that while the, while it is important to have a regulatory approach, it's equally important that we have non-regulatory actions, too. Because as I mentioned before, you know, most of our tree removal is for, is for dead and hazardous trees. So taking care of our trees is really important, but we can't really regulate that. We can't force people to take care of their trees. So we need to approach it from education and community engagement, voluntary programs, as well as city stewardship. And these are things that we've actually been doing for a number of years, but there are also new recommendations in the urban and community forestry plan that will take this sort of non-regulatory approach. And so they complement one to each other. So we have both regulatory and non-regulatory actions. So getting into the specific recommendation from the urban and community forestry plan, I first want to say that this is not intended to be an exhaustive list. If you look in Appendix A, it is hundreds of pages of long. I am not going to go through every single recommendation. So what we've, what I've done here is I've sort of grouped them into some key issues, recognizing that there's a lot more details in the Appendix A, which, again, it's, at this point, it's not necessary for you to, to go through all of those. We're also going to be conducting public outreach throughout this project, which will inform further issues and potential updates to the code. But focusing on what, and summarizing what the key code issues are. The first one is creating clear and objective standards for native housing. I've already explained that. That's actually a huge component, and we need to do that to comply with state law. Next is ensuring consistent tree permitting between development and non-development tree removal. And this is something that we have heard a lot of complaints from the community about. People feel that it's easier for trees to be removed when you have development versus if you just have a landscaping project or you just have a tree that you just want to get rid of for whatever reason. They feel like it, it is much easier to get trees removed for development. And there's probably some truth to that because the Tree Code is not a land use regulation, so we cannot tell someone that they can, that they have to have a smaller home just to save trees. So if you have a completely treed lot, we can't tell you, you only get a 1,000-square-foot house. If the code says you get a 3,500-square-foot house, we have to allow them to have that. But what our Tree Code allows us to do is, hey, can we move it around? Can we keep the same development that you're allowed? We're not taking away your development rights, but can we not put it right in the middle of the lot? Maybe you shift it over to the left so you can save five trees, that type of thing. So that is the, the second issue in terms of assuring consistency between development and non-development. Creating incentives for tree preservation. It's not just about regulatory approach. So is, if there's ways that we can create incentives. So for instance, if you save a tree, maybe you can get a small setback reduction. Or, again, I'm just spitballing here. I don't know what, what the recommendations will come up with, but, but those types of things to not only just come down with a stick, but also offer a carrot. Creating volume standards for street trees and parking lots. This is actually quite a big issue because, as you know, when we have our streets and our parking lots, these can become areas where there's significant heat islands, and trees help mitigate that. And in order to have trees available that can survive and that can provide the kind of canopy that, that kind of mitigates that heat island effect, we need to make sure that they have the soil volume, enough soil volume so that they can survive. Creating canopy standards for commercial and industrial development. These areas of the city tend to have far less tree canopy than residential areas, so trying to increase it within reason in, in those zones. Requiring mitigation trees for more tree removal types. Right now, we only require it for two tree removal types. I don't, I don't know that it's, it makes a lot of sense to require it for every type of tree removal, because sometimes people are removing trees. Maybe they have 20 trees on their site and they remove two, and there's no room. Maybe they took those two down because of overcrowding. So we'll have to look at that closely. But having an opportunity for, for more mitigation for more permit types could be helpful as well. Of course, evaluating Tree Code for wildfire-safe landscaping practices. Wildfire threats are becoming more and more common, and so we want to make sure that we take that into account in our tree regulations. And then finally, codifying a requirement to plant large mitigation trees where possible. This is something where staff tries to condition tree permits to, so that applicants plant larger trees when there is available room. Because unfortunately, our State of the Urban Forest Report identified a disturbing trend where people are taking down large stature trees and then putting back like dogwoods. And, and over time, that's going to have a huge impact on our canopy. So trying to find a way to balance that and making that a requirement in the Tree Code.
Jessica, if I can interrupt.
Of course.
Can you define mitigation tree?
Can I what? Sorry.
You define mitigation tree?
A mitigation tree is replacement trees required for a specific tree removal permit. So for instance, for a Type 2 tree cutting permit, if you remove two trees, our minimum mitigation requirement is that you plant two trees back. So it's one-to-one mitigation. And then, as I said before, if it's a native, we would require you to plant a native tree as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So for this tree regulation amendment project, the overall goal and objective is, number one, to follow the recommendations of the urban and community forestry plan. What we did find is that the urban and community forestry plan review did not say our Tree Code regulations need to, we need to start over from scratch. Just throw it out, rewrite the whole Tree Code. We're not doing that. So as part of this project, it is going to be more targeted amendments to the Tree Code. In addition, we want to make sure that we align our regulations with best, best practices in urban forestry. And this includes things like pest management. We're seeing emerald ash borer and other pests that are emerging that are, have serious threats to our, our trees here in the city, as well as climate resiliency. We also want to increase regulatory clarity and efficiency. This is something specifically that the council asked us to, to do. We want to make this as clear as possible for all tree removal types, not just housing. And we also want to make sure that we're not creating a lot of red tape. We want to improve consistency and implementation and ensure, of course, ensure compliance with state law. We do have an ad hoc tree task force that was appointed by the City Council in June. And this task force is, consists of 12 members of various stakeholder groups. So we have arborists, we have members of our boards and commissions, we have developers and builders, we have at-large community members, we have people who have some specialization in sustainability. I, I think it's a great group. A, a lot of them are very familiar with our tree regulations, and they're charged with providing, advising, and providing feedback on work products for the project team. The charge, I'm not going to read through it, but it aligns with the project goals and objectives that I just mentioned. And it's just really important that we have a charge statement for them because, again, we, we're not here to rewrite the entire code or to throw it out. We're really kind of trying to stick in primarily with the recommendations of the urban and community forestry plan. So in terms of the project's scope and steps, it involves several steps. So starting off with a code and policy audit, and this is the So starting off with a code and policy audit, and this is the consultant will be reviewing our urban and community forestry plan, our development code, our tree code. They've held interviews with key staff and who worked also on the urban and community forestry plan and who also administer our tree regulations. And then they are going to kind of provide an overview of those documents and interviews, and then summarize the recommended amendments from the urban and community forestry plan. That is pretty much complete. They're going to turn in that final draft to staff pretty soon. Right now, they are working on the review, what we call best practices and alternatives. So they're basically looking at peer jurisdictions, and they're looking for best practices in terms of what have they done to kind of incorporate sustainable practices and climate resiliency and things like that, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. So the consultant is currently working on that part of the project's scope. Tree task force will meet up to six times over the course of the project, which is expected to take about a year. And I already explained what their role is, and they had their first meeting earlier this month. There's also stakeholder and community engagement. So in the next couple of months, we'll be holding stakeholder interviews. So this is more, again, trying to get stakeholder groups, but getting, say, all the arborists together and talking about other issues that they may have with the tree code to kind of hone in on those a little more fine-grained developers, people who've gotten tree cutting permits from us, people from the business community, all sorts of stakeholder groups. We're going to be meeting with them. And then we're going to have a more broader public outreach event to reach a wider audience as well. And then we will end with first coming up with draft code concepts, which we'll bring back to the planning commission as well as the city council, before moving on to a series of code amendments, which again, will come to the council, other boards and commissions, including parks, natural area and resources advisory board, sustainability advisory board, et cetera, before we have public hearings later in next spring. So as far as the schedule goes, we are here, which is, we're having our first kickoff meeting here with you, the planning commission. As I mentioned before, the project consultant has already completed or is about to complete the first two tasks, first three actually. The tree code task force will continue to meet over the course of the project. Next up is stakeholder and community engagement, as well as public outreach. And then we expect to be back here in early fall with the commission with draft code concepts. So that is, again, my whole purpose here is not to get into any nitty-gritty details, but just to kind of introduce you to our tree regulations and the basis for this project. And now's an opportunity for you to ask any questions, provide feedback, and then if there's any other key issues that you think in particular you want to highlight, or any other issues you want to add, I'm all ears, and I'm open to any questions or discussion you want to have. Okay. Oh, can you speak into, sorry.
I take a look at these trees that are in my yard, and in the summertime, they're my friends, but in the wintertime, they're my absolute enemy here. And it's perplexing when you talk to other people in the same situation. What can you do about some of this? And these trees are not getting any smaller as time goes on. There's that area in Lake Oswego where you go down to the end of Crew's Way if you're going to the highway, and on the right-hand side, there was a tremendous loss of trees there. And there were just, there's nothing there but trees. But when we had the storm a couple of years ago, you had a complete tree fall down there that was more than just minimal. Is there any thought that goes into this about what to do in these situations where you have a growth of trees, particularly on private property, where there is a tremendous possibility of real damage to houses and so forth?
Yeah, and it's a hard issue to address because when you take down trees because you're scared of them, it has a, it can have a ripple effect because trees grow as groups. And if you take down your trees and it's close to your neighbor's trees, then you could create a hazard for them because now you've taken away the sort of the windhardiness of them growing as a group. And if they take their trees down, and there's a ripple effect, right? And obviously, that goes against what we're trying to achieve here with our canopy goals. The ice storm that happened that you're referring to a couple of years ago, yeah, it was a terrible ice storm, and we're still hearing people talk about it. And it was particularly devastating because the wind direction that that storm came from was the opposite of what our prevailing winds are. And when trees grow, the prevailing wind is where they're windhardy. And when you change that and there's significant wind gusts, even trees that are perfectly healthy will come down. So it was sort of a, I would say, a freak storm in that way, in that it just wasn't the wind direction that we typically see for big storms. So that's why we saw trees come down that otherwise were perfectly healthy. And it's hard to plan for those because it doesn't happen very often, but people are right to be scared, and I understand that, and I sympathize with that. But the answer also is not to just remove all our trees, because even though a lot of trees came down, you can see far more are still standing, right? That survived that storm. So, but it is, what you brought up is exactly what we have heard from community members and what we've heard from the city council. And it is something we're going to address as part of this tree code update or tree regulation update. I don't know what the answer is right now, but we're going to look into it, is sort of what do we do with the trees that are either diseased or maybe semi-hazardous, but don't quite meet the definition of dead or hazardous in our code? And is there a path where we can provide some relief or allow some removal? But again, I don't have an answer for you today. Yeah.
I have a follow-up question on that. Are there any, we're talking mostly about people wanting to remove trees that shouldn't be removed. Is there anything to the opposite effect where a private landowner has a tree that is causing a danger, and that landowner isn't taking care of that tree adequately, that the city can enforce care of that tree so they aren't endangering their neighbors?
I think it is so incredibly great that you guys are bringing this up because these are exactly the two issues that we were hearing from the public, as well as the city council, because we had an initial study session before I scoped out this project with the city council back in November. Absolutely, that is one of the things we were asked to look at, is what do you do when you have hazard or dead trees that are on your neighbor's property, and your neighbor is not taking care of them? And we have some people who are in some pretty precarious positions where the neighbor is just, either financially they can't take care of it, or maybe they're elderly, or there's other reasons that they just aren't going to do anything about it, but the target is the neighbor's home, and they feel rightly scared. So it is a big issue, and one of the things that we were asked to is look how other cities deal with this and what our policy options are. Because currently, right now, we don't have any regulations or enforcement around that. We consider it to be a private matter, and we typically try to have mediation between the groups to try to come to a solution, but that doesn't always work, unfortunately. So that's great that you brought that up, but yes, that is something we're going to address as well.
And the law, again, the law that deals with this tree fall down is quite counterintuitive because you feel as though that the responsibility for a tree falling in your yard from your neighbor's yard is his responsibility, and that's not true.
That's what I've heard. I'm not an attorney, so I can't opine on that, but that is what I've heard as well, which is counterintuitive.
And the other thing is, is that from these large trees, you get a tree, you get a limb breakdown, and in many cases, those limbs are as big as a small tree.
Oh, yeah.
And they can cause the same amount of damage. It's pretty wieldy to deal with these things.
Thanks, Jessica, for the presentation and walking us through. Any other commissioners have questions or comments on this one?
We'll be back before you this fall, and we'll have some fun talking about trees. I look forward to it.
Thank you. That'll take us to item number eight on the agenda, other business.
Oh, there it goes. I have a couple of items that I want to bring to the attention of the planning commission, and really, I'm putting out a call for volunteers. Don't want to say I'm volunteering you, but the planning commission does have a specific sort of position on each of these advisory committees I'll be talking about, so I'm looking for representatives from the planning commission to fill those. So, yeah, you know, we really want planning commission to be represented on these committees, I guess I will say, so I really hope that this is something that we can do. First and foremost, at least in my mind, is the Foothills Community Advisory Committee. I had been here talking a little bit more broadly about the Foothills project with you all about a month ago, I believe it was. And, yeah, we've begun recruitment for our Foothills CAC. This is something where we're looking for a variety of different, I think I might have explained this before, but we're looking for folks to cover a variety of different bases, you know, folks that are with expertise in housing development, infrastructure, sustainability, engineering, transportation, access, things of that nature. But amongst the positions, we have set aside a position for one non-voting position for a planning commissioner, in addition to one non-voting position for a city councillor. So we are hoping to appoint members to the community advisory committee in early September. So I'm hoping that, just wanted to put this bug in your all's ear right now, and of course, you know, you've been distributed these materials, so hopefully you've seen this, and this isn't completely new to you. You know, we put out the broader recruitment as well. But, yeah, so I'm hoping that by the time we convene again, we can get maybe something more official, but just wanted to get you all thinking about who might be a good representative for that committee in particular. This will be one that is a little bit more, you know, it's a little bit more involved than some other opportunities that you might have as the planning commission. This would be a two-year position, so September 2025 through June 2027. So this is a longer-term advisory board than many that we have in the city. So I just wanted to point that out. We do anticipate about 10 in-person meetings, so that's sort of what would be, you know, involved with that particular position. So, yeah, it would be wonderful if somebody was wanting to be involved with that, but if not, we can talk more about that, or if there's more than one person that wants to be on that, we can talk more. But just wanted to introduce that for you all, and then we can maybe circle back at our next meeting. Yes?
Eric, does the commissioner that sits on it need to be on the planning commission for two years?
Not necessarily.
In other words, if your term ends earlier than two years, you don't qualify for it?
That's a very good question. Not necessarily. We're flexible with that. You know, I think we did have, I think it was Chair Stewart was on a committee for a little bit longer than he was on the planning commission, so we understand. But generally speaking, it is helpful for that person to be involved in the commission so that they can come here and provide some sort of updates for you all. But of course, me being in charge of this project and liaison to the planning commission, I think you'll get plenty of updates on this project regardless. But, you know, it is just, you know, something that we think is important to involve the planning commission with, and planning commission makes a really, you know, key recommendation in the sort of approval process for the plan. So, yeah. It's not a requirement, but it's nice. Don't quit, please.
Deanna and I are out, disqualified.
And so that just brings me to the next item, and this is a lower type of level of commitment. But we're also looking for a planning commission representative for our board that takes care of neighborhood association insurance. So it's really, it's called the Neighborhood Coalition of Lake Oswego. That's a little bit of a confusing title, but we can refer to it as the NCLO. And it is basically the board that is established for the sole purpose of maintaining sort of this insurance for neighborhood associations. So they meet just once a year, really to just make sure that there are no outstanding questions or issues. Really, this is a pretty, again, low involvement type of commitment. Talking one meeting a year, and typically, you know, neighborhood associations are the ones that have the most specific questions about what types of meetings are covered. You know, can we have alcohol at our events? The answer is no, by the way, can't. But these are the type of things that, you know, the NCLO talks about on a general, generally speaking, on an annual basis. So again, we don't anticipate that they'll meet right away, but we are tasked with our once-a-year meeting coming up in the next month or two. So it'd be good to, when we meet again, circle back on that and see if there are any volunteers from the planning commission to serve on the NCLO. And, you know, just kind of talk a little bit more about that. It is a good way at least to, you know, I guess, form a group and, you know, have some type of connection with neighborhood association chairs and other folks that are involved with their own neighborhood associations. So, yeah, it is friendly group, really pretty simple commitment here, but, yeah, we have a nice conversation once a year. That's the other business.
Thank you. Should we ask for volunteers now, or should we talk about it next?
Yeah, I mean, you know, whatever you're comfortable with. You know, I think if somebody's willing to step up now, that's wonderful.
I'd like to do the neighborhood association.
Okay.
Go.
Are folks, are there any other folks that want to be on that board, or going, going, gone, all right? All right, it's yours.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bruce.
The Foothills, what's the terminology for the other one? Foothills Development?
The Community Advisory Committee. So, yeah, we're just calling it the Foothills CAC. It's really the, you know, the Foothills Framework Plan Update. I guess, you know, more broadly speaking, that's what we're calling the project, but...
Very interesting project. I mean, if you're interested in development and housing and the whole Foothills area down there, it's one of the biggest opportunities in the city, so that's my plug.
Yeah, we often, as, you know, planning commission, as you're all aware, often talk about code amendments and, you know, some things that are a little bit less tangible, you know, a lot less specific to a certain area of the city and planning in terms of real life, what's going to be there. And this is one of the last sort of areas of the city where we haven't done that in-depth work and need to still kind of think about what's going to go on in the Foothills district or neighborhood. So really, kind of a unique experience within the context of Lake Oswego being largely built out to talk about sort of urban design, the form of development, as well as all the infrastructure pieces and all the sort of various different social issues and policy issues that you layer on top of that.
I'd be interested for that.
Great. We do not have to extend this to the next meeting. In fact, if folks are comfortable with it right now, I just didn't want to kind of force you to make a quick decision, but if there are no other objectors, I'd be more than happy to go with your nomination here.
I'm good with that. Thanks, Rachel. Anyone else?
It's a great fit.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. And Eric, to maybe put an idea in your ear, we could maybe get some students involved as well.
Absolutely. I'm glad you mentioned that. We actually have specific positions on the board for, I believe, two members under the age of 18. So that's another thing that we don't often do as a planning commission, or in terms of our task forces, et cetera. We often, well, at least as the planning commission, there's no youth advisory board members of the planning commission because you have such a defined sort of set of responsibilities, and you have to make recommendations consistent with city code. Other advisory boards do have youth advisory board members and youth members on their committees, so that's something that we don't get to experience too much at the commission. So that's another, I'm just selling it to Rachel, I guess, here.
You already got the sale. Don't keep talking.
No more sale necessary, I guess, but it's a good opportunity.
Well, thanks to Rachel and James for stepping up.
And thank you for the quick decision.
Schedule review, item number nine?
All right, so schedule review, coming up at our next meeting on August 11th, we'll have... have the first kind of work session dedicated just to this project. We did touch base on it in terms of HPS implementation, but we're going to be talking about the code audit and amendments for housing and business. This is something that our senior planner, Evan France, said will be taking the lead on. So he has recently applied for a grant from Metro to help fund this work. This is a strategy that was identified in the Housing Production Strategy, and there's a lot to talk about, but we're at a very early phase, so he's just going to come basically introduce that project to you at our next meeting. And we won't have to worry about appointing any members to any commissions or advisory reports there. And on August 25th, the next meeting in August, or second meeting in August, you will be receiving another update on Foothills, likely before the first meeting of the CAC. But this will be to talk about the draft public involvement strategy that's being developed as we speak. We met actually earlier today to talk a little bit about the progress there, so really wanting to take that draft of what our consultants at First Forty Feet have come up with so far, and get some input from you all before we move forward on implementing that public involvement strategy. So that's what we'll be talking about on August 25th. And, you know, I think after today's input, I feel confident that we can meet the hearing date for the Fair Housing Policy and Education Comprehensive Plan Amendments, which we just discussed. We'd be bringing those to a hearing on September 8th at our meeting, and then considering the findings at our second meeting in September on the 22nd. And that is currently something that I have scheduled to be a remote meeting, that second meeting in September, just because we had just, we just have those findings on the agenda for now, so it'll be a little bit more limited in scope that time. But, yeah, that brings us through September at least.
Thank you, Eric. Unless anyone else has any closing thoughts? Adjourned.